Welcome to the April 11th, 2024. Regular meeting of the HPARB of Sag Harbor. First, let's start the meeting by saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for your patience. First, item on our list is the minutes from the last meeting. Does anyone here on the board have any corrections, additions, modifications?
No.
Okay, then I'll ask for a vote to approve the minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That was unanimous.
He seconded.
Excuse me?
He made the motion, I'll second it.
Okay. And by the way, we should introduce, we have our new alternate. Has been approved and everything here, and her name is Sweet Bornstein. She's a member of Sag Harbor, just built a brand-new house to replace her former residence, and it's it's a gorgeous house, and she's got very refined architectural instincts, so welcome to the board. Okay, we have correspondence requiring action. The first is regarding 11 Bridge Street. And it is an action that we are going to take to support the planning board of the village becoming the lead agency on the environmental and the other reviews that need to be done. Is there any discussion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
I.
I second.
And the second is regarding 59 Glover Street. And that is to
Fifty-six?
Fifty-six, I'm sorry. That's where I lost my That is to a request for a two-year extension on the approval that we gave them two years ago, May 12, 2022. So, any discussion? Okay, I'll take a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All business. Midnight Pizza LLC, 59 Glover Street, please come forward. Thank you.
Good evening, board. My name is Katie Frank from Creighton, PC. I'm also joined here tonight by Marcus Zimke. He's the architect on the project.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Okay, so just as a refresher, this application for demolition and build, this application was in front of this board summer of 2022. There was nothing but positive feedback during that time applicant watched the other boards, still came approvals. And then we came back here last month, but there was confusion over the subject premises. A day after the meeting, I think it was April, March 15. Mr. Suterall did send an email to the board clarifying the confusion. He was referencing the house next to the subject premises. So he did say in the email that this should be read into the minutes at the next meeting to avoid any future confusion. So it should be if I read the short email, just so in the minutes, okay. So from Mr. Suterall addressed to the chairman. And he said, "Good morning, Steve. I did a little research on number 59 Glover Street this morning, which was on the agenda last night for demolition. Although its tax number is listed in the National Register Nomination Form as a contributing resource in the historic district, South County Tax Number number 903319.3, it seems there may have been a subdivision since historic district was updated in 1994. The listed house is actually situated next door on 1.85 acre at 53 Glover Street, whereas the subject property is located on 1.527 acres directly to the north and is identified correctly in the application. My suggestion is that this clarification be read to the next meeting to avoid any future confusion or which houses has applied for demolition."
Okay. Now, this is fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine Glover, yes. So if you're at the corner of Glover, I think on Water Street, you actually cannot see the house. It's a very narrow driveway. It's set behind very tall hedges. You can see just the corner of a new garage, but the house is completely strained from the property. You can, however, see it from the water side, and we did obtain carpet community approval. So I'm, and just as a brief overview, so the applicant proposing to demolish the existing house, so it was built in the mid-1990s. We are going to rebuild the house. It's going to be about 734 square feet larger. We are well under the building coverage, well under total block coverage. We're also proposing a new 50-foot non-servant, non-buffer zone, which is not at the subject premises currently, so that's going to really increase the native species vegetation on the premises. Marcus is a architect, so he's going to take you through the detail of the planned house.
I'm actually sharing.
Oh, Marcus, could you share?
Yeah, yeah, I can go ahead and share mine. Does that, can you see this?
Yeah, now, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, great. So yeah, so basically, as Katie just described, we have this 50-foot buffer of native plantings. We are now introducing, it's currently just lawn. So we are introducing that on the water side of the property. And then we are also pulling the house back from the existing location. The current house sits around about kind of in this area, so we're from the water and kind of, and holding to our all setback requirements. We're not seeking any kind of variance. And the the house is, sorry, let me see. We, it's, it's 3,700 square feet. It's a two-story house in a FEMA zone, so it is set two feet above grade, the first finished floor. And we are endeavoring to design it in a style which we find sympathetic with other homes in the area, on the street, and in Sag Harbor generally, using the same materiality with shingle roofing, cedar shingle roofing. And this is, we have a sort of, it might be hard to see here, but we have a color scheme sort of established in our drawings as well, which can be sort of reflect, which you can kind of see in the proposed renderings as well. And and that is sort of the gist of it. This is the view, this first view up on the top left is what Katie was describing as a very narrow view from Glover Street down into the property. So you really get just a sliver of the front of the house off of the, off of the road.
And that's proposed house, the current?
And this is, correct. Yeah, so this is proposed, and this is the, this is the garage which has, which has been built. This was approved separately under different submission. So that garage is now existing, but the proposed house is standing there further back. And then, of course, stepping into the motor court, this would be the proposed front facade. And the proposed rear facade, which is really the front of the yard, being on the water. And I believe that's that's most of it, that's all of it, rather.
Is there vegetation that you're bringing in, or is everything staying just the way it is? Do you have that planned?
We have, yes, we do have, so again, we have the buffer on the water side. We have, I'm sorry?
I know the waterfront, you know, I know that. Which is pretty.
And then, yeah, so then we are maintaining an existing perimeter hedge along both sides of the property line on the side yards. And, and then we do mean to introduce plantings around, around the front of the house and the new garage as well, which are best reflected, I suppose, more in the renderings to soften everything.
They're listed there on plan.
Is the vegetation to be incorporated into your plan, is that listed on the plan?
Right there on the front, is it on the bottom?
We, we, we don't, oops, we don't actually have that front, the plantings in front of the house listed. We can, we can update our planting plan to list those out.
And we're trying to encourage everybody to use as much pollinators as possible.
Right.
I think the buffer zone is everything.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other thoughts or comments from the board?
I'm slightly confused between two pictures, which I believe are the
The renderings?
Renderings facing the water. This, this, that.
At the bottom, yeah.
That's what you propose, correct?
To face the water.
Correct.
Yes. Okay, because there's something else that flops up every so often with tons of windows on it, which I, I don't know where that is.
Okay, so it shows us the, that's the back of the house.
Right.
So we want to look at number two.
Okay, and that's the front of the house. Okay, and I don't know what that other one is, but
The other one is from the road. Yeah.
Yeah, can you show us the actual line?
Elevation?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the one.
This, this is the front of the house, the street side. This, this lower drawing.
It looks very
Looks different from the rendering.
It looks very, like there are many more windows.
Yeah, the windows are a little frightening, but the rendering, they don't, they look all right.
Yeah, it might just be the line work is it's, you know, it's all
To me, that looks almost nothing like the rendering.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure it's the same building. This is what will be
Well, it is. Yeah, it is, it's the same. I suppose it's it just, again, being the line work, you don't, in this view, you're not really seeing
I see, okay.
The left side over here because of the angle of the view, but it is, it is in fact the same drawing and rendering. They do match, I promise.
Yeah.
Looks like it's many more, but
Yeah.
You don't, you don't see this left side in that because of the angle of the rendering.
Right, right.
That's what you're kind of missing. That steps back further, so it's, you're kind of, yeah, so it's a little, yeah.
Yeah, and I think on the, on the drawing, you have the shutters.
Yeah.
The shutters are more prominent.
Right, there's lots of window panes and lots of shutters, but so that's what people coming by in their boats are going to see.
No, no.
This, they will see this
This is
This side, this side.
Lots of windows there, too.
There will be also a 50-foot buffer going to soften
Yeah.
so it's not, and again, I think Marcus, as he said, it's a lot of lines, but once you see it in the rendering.
The rendering helps.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. Because there's, there's also a lot of, there's also a lot of depth where the massing is stepping back, so it's not, it's not as, you know, not that, it's not one prominent long wall, one facade.
And honestly, I think if I was going by in a boat, I'd say, wow, that's a beautiful one. That's how I would feel, a light.
Yeah.
Are these beach grass rendered in, or that's from a photo?
That's, that's, that's rendered in from, for the buffer, to suggest the line of the buffer.
So what kind of beach grass is that?
I will have to look at the, it's a mixture of kind of all of these plantings. It's, so it's a mix of
Can you rotate that?
Yeah, let me, yeah, let me, let me rotate this, sorry.
After all.
Okay, that's much easier.
And in logic.
We're good. Okay, now, can we go back to
Still to like to see.
Milkweebs, Astor.
There you go. Yeah, there you go.
You guys want to take a look at it?
That helps.
Okay, thank you.
Only one with a bad optometrist, I guess.
He's all seen.
Yeah.
You good? All right, let me take a quick one, please. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, then I, I will move it to take, this is a discussion item, right?
No, no.
A public hearing, I'm sorry.
Public hearing.
Yeah, from the, from the public, sorry. Is anybody from the public who wished to comment, who's present here or online? Okay.
Okay.
So with no comment, I will make a motion that we approve the
Tiffany, a motion to close the
Close the public hearing, sorry.
I'll second closing the public.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now I'll make a motion to approve the application of 59 Glover Street. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, and that's 12 Glover.
Now we have 59.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, we're good.
We're good, we just did, we just did 59.
Now we're at
Now we're at 12. We're at 12 on the next
We're at 12.
12 Glover Street.
Oh, jeez, what about 56?
The 56 was
Extension, oh, we got it, sorry.
All right, Tiffany.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Tiffany Scarborough, 45, Greenwich Street, 50. Actually, here behalf, this evening, on behalf of Anthony Verney-Bogg, was unable to be here. Represent the client is not a matter of matter, so he, we, I would open the set of plans that has been revised. And as per the ARB meeting on March 14th and the site visit that occurred on March 19th, all the existing trim brackets, windows, and other architectural features to be preserved or repaired where necessary are indicated on A2, A4, and A5. On A2, the area of the existing foundation to remain was indicated, I remember there were some
Are you going to show us anything here?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I get it. She's saying, she's moving.
Okay, it's just the first page.
And are you going to read what he wrote?
Oh, that's, I'm reading from it, so those are
That's the plan.
That's the point, that's my
Right.
You can go. Okay. I know there was some concern last time about how much foundation was exposed, and I know that during the site visit, that was resolved. We do have indicated on the plans that a bricklet will be where it's exposed, if there is an exposure of the foundation. The double-molled windows on the second floor, southeast main gable, have been removed. And instead, they're proposing windows in the same dimensions as the windows below, as were requested.
If we could get, do you know what plate that is?
It's A4.
So we can go to A4, so everybody understands. Zach and I were on site with Anthony, and we made some minor changes to discuss some changes with him. He was amenable to. I think Judith, there were some things that were consistent, you know, concerned.
Did you and Zach check the siding? Because he was, he was talking about changing the siding.
You did.
I'm wondering if it's necessary.
I don't think, it's not a historic.
It is historic. Totally historic, oh my god, it's Yeah.
You said A4?
It's, it's it's got amazing details that have to be preserved. It's, it's got all these fancy brackets in this.
Right, that thing.
And
What's going to change? Okay, so Tiffany, we're all on A4 now.
Okay, so A4, the windows on southeast elevation have all been changed so that they are the same size. I understand that last time that windows had been different sizes, so they've made those all the same. Also, last time
What was it going to say?
So the
This used to be a square, but he corrected it.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Right. The other thing that occurred on A4 is there was some concern about the doorwards being straight lines. So Anthony has created sort of a sort of mullion in the middle that I think breaks up that, the concern with regards to the length of that door.
Where are we talking about? If we turn to page A4B.
A4 and southeast elevation.
A4A.
Bottom right. Southwest elevation.
So the east elevation?
Southeast, yeah, bottom right.
Where?
And you can see that dormer on the top right?
Mm-hmm.
The dormer has been changed slightly so that it's not just a flat roof. There's a slight, a slight, a slight
Oh, this thing.
slight raise right there.
It's got that thing sticking up in the middle.
Exactly.
Right, okay.
And that's just to, as, as we said, break up
A4A.
With the concern where the
Okay.
like the dormer.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, my page is
Um
Now, it's on the upper right.
Was there any just, just
It's on the upper right.
The line is completely different.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, really? Yeah, it's right there.
This thing.
Yeah.
That makes it less
Right.
But still.
It's actually shown in two different places. It's also just shown on A4. There's a lot of plans.
It's a problem. This is what it wants.
There you go. On the screen. I did it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So here's the dormer that we were talking about with the straight line.
Yes.
And that's been broken up to create a little bit of interest there, so it's not
I got you, that was
all the way straight across. All the elevations have been indicated.
Looks weird. Yeah.
And the rich height of the new real gable, just for the board's application, is just under, a foot under, lower than the main ridge of the house, so it's going to be that above.
What are the chances of making it even more than a foot lower?
Probably not much. I know that the addition itself is totals about 400 square feet. So I don't know whether the ridge should be lowered. I don't know what the roof heights are on the interior. Was that a request that was made last?
I think the rear of the house is an extension, Judith.
Yes, this is an extension on the back of the house.
And it's already, it's already subservient and existing. So he's not, he's not raising that, he's maintaining that. But when we walked, it wasn't clear from certain vantage points, it's not clear on the diagrams.
Okay.
But the three of us walked in, it was, it was already lower.
Can you see the rear of the house from the street?
No, we walked on the top.
No masking. You will be, you will not be able to now because this ridge line, this ridge line is about a foot lower.
This is what we'll say. I would suggest that the little bump-up that he added in the back to keep it from being such a straight line, I don't know what anyone else thinks, but I'm wondering about having it be a peaked roof instead of straight. It looks kind of like a piece of machinery or something now. Yeah, it looks kind of odd, like it doesn't really fit.
He's, he's trying not to create another line. Can you go back?
Um, I understand that he wants to break up that long, straight line. But I'm wondering about putting a peaked roof on top of that square roof instead. Having it, instead of having it be flat, because where else is there, I don't know.
So you mean
I would suggest doing something to it because it really doesn't harmonize with any other part of the house that I'm looking at. I think, Judith, that he's matching the two on the sides. You see, to the, to the right of the little bump-up, it's flat. And to the left, it's flat. So I think he's matching that.
He is, but I think what he's doing is by raising it, the top of the windows then get misaligned, and it sort of looks a little odd. And I think what Judy's saying is, if you take the, instead of making it a straight roof, making it a pyramid, it sort of matches with the other pyramids that exist across the board.
And also, if the little window in it came down and was on the same level as, the top of the little window was on the same level as the two windows on either side. It, so it would be, the windows would all line up with each other, and then the middle piece would have a pyramid roof.
I guess my question is, why, why did we ask for it to be broken up? Like, what was the problem with the straight line? Was that a preference to have that?
Apparently, it was at the last meeting.
I don't remember that.
Make an effort to break up the, the length of that door. We, I don't know if we would have asked.
Oh, I think we had a, I think we had a we had a comment from somebody in the public who was very passionate about that.
Well, there's the person who wrote the letter who's very passionate about saving every little detail because the details on this house are amazing, yeah.
They're all indicated now on the plans.
Good, good, because he was concerned that it's all very well for Anthony to promise it. But what about the, the actual builder who goes in and accidentally knocks something off and doesn't
All of everything they just wanted preserved, it is going to be preserved, now known on the plans.
Okay.
Including brackets.
Yeah, even the brackets on the drain pipes.
Even the brackets, even the, we understand about the pillars in the front, and they're going to be, so that's going to be noted on the plans as well.
See, there you go.
I think we agreed that the pillars were not original.
Anthony said that they
They were enclosed, okay.
Right, and it may be something inside, so because when they started, when they started the process, they're going to check and see what's underneath.
Mm-hmm.
And if there is anything underneath, that's what they intend to use as the original, otherwise we'll go back to the design that already is there. They think there might be something that would be
Make these, make this, this, and this all line up and then put a
Right, because that's the theme of that, that's the theme of that.
I'd like to look at the floor plans here.
Yeah, well, on my question
Behind this raised window, might be bathroom or something, or
Yeah.
Then I have a reason for it.
Well, my question is
Okay, then leave it raised, but still put a peaked roof.
Last month?
And also
What did that look like?
It was a
Before you asked him to, do we have a copy of that?
It sounded just a straight door room.
Yeah. Have that?
I think it was just straight across.
So where, so there was no window?
There was an addition, there was, that was a larger window, it was the same type of window as the other windows on the door room.
Okay.
So this is just an effort to break it up. I don't see that there's any problem with realigning that window or the roof line there, according is so inclined.
Um, I am not in favor of this second-story addition. The, the way that the house is situated is kind of like the road goes on a curve. And so when you're walking along it, the side is very prominent. And I think by adding this second addition, the second-story addition, you'd be changing the spatial relationships to a very historic property. And I think it would be jarring for the neighborhood. Regardless of how many houses have been enlarged on this street, this is one of the most this is a very beautiful house in the entrance of Glover Street, and I think we would be doing the neighborhood a disservice by allowing a second story to cut into the roof plane, or the sky plane here. It's a picture of the house as seen from the sidewalk.
This would be very visible, right, right there.
Is that part of the record, those photographs, or?
You, you can, it's just a photo of the house.
Well, you're showing it, so it might get to be part of the record. You have to email it to Kerry.
Will do.
Um, what would happen if the projection started where this, the standing seam roof dormer is? What if that's where the extension came from the house, not up one foot below the peak, but down to, you know, as low as the dormer projection?
Okay, so look in here. Okay, so look in here, just. He's trying, he's trying to get some, so what we're seeing on the previous page. He's trying to create some headroom here, so this becomes usable space.
This is what is proposed to be added.
This little.
This this section is what is proposed to be added.
Yeah, so this is what it is now.
We aren't really concerned with what's inside the house. We're concerned with what it looks like in the outside. So if something needs headroom, that's not our problem.
Yeah.
It has, this is like one point I was.
Just from here, right, this this roof exists.
It's already there.
And so it's extending it.
Right, and it's.
So as he extends it, he's extending it the same as.
It's extending it a little bit.
Yeah, except from here, it looks like. No, why doesn't he, okay, this is already here.
Extending to here and then adding.
This is already here. Right, so.
Second floor.
Now, you wanna add more space, so.
He's bringing it backwards from the street.
So he's just adding, extending backwards.
Let's go back to previous page.
Why not add starting down here?
The previous.
But I think that the, so you just make sure your concern is this line is too long?
The existing house. So he's bringing out a.
I'm, yeah, I'm concerned with this.
Yeah, this line is too long, is actually.
Well, I'd like to look at the floor plan, would give us a better measurement here. But he's extending this to the rear.
Yes.
But.
And just as a, as a point of reference.
He's also adding this on top of everything.
Height of the ceilings on the second floor is eight and a half feet, so it's not up very. High ceiling. Down, so it'd be difficult from a practical perspective.
Does does the issue that it's a standing seam roof and therefore? More visible than if it was?
No, 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 I have nothing against. Standing seams, but I'm saying this is a way of lowering it from here to here. This new piece. I mean, I'm I'm with Megan in that I I wish there was no giant addition being put on the back at all. But they're within their rights to do so.
But it is.
But if we can somehow. Make it less. Um obvious, I'd still like to.
Would it be visible from the street, the back addition, or is it just?
Oh, yes.
From the back, the 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 addition would.
If you walk down from Main Street.
Yep.
It's wide open there.
Just to be clear, the the addition itself in total is about four hundred and thirty square feet, so it's about half the size of the zone.
Yeah.
I think you're continuing the 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 roof line from the front of the house. So to me, that that that's a a flow that makes sense to me. The only thing that just seems a little off to me is that little pop up with the little tiny handle. I mean, I would have that, you know, with the same pitch roof. But then the roof line, it it continues from what exists there already.
Right, true.
So it, so to me, that visually, I think that that's not as impactful. It's just the other weird little bump out that seems.
And that I think is an, and that's a stairwell, so that usually may change.
Yeah.
That's all. Oh.
Tiffany, let me ask you this, this um. The original house was the part that contained the chimney, which is the bump out towards the rear. Is that original? I don't remember.
I believe it's part of.
This part.
Timmy?
This.
Yeah, the part that contains.
Off of the diagram, it would be this part, which he's extending, right?
Right.
So, so.
Oh, this part.
I'm wondering if this was original or this, or the chimney was here and this was built around the chimney later.
It's more likely they built around the chimney than usually they would build on the outside of houses.
Which would, yeah.
Built around it.
So question came, I think, which is older. Um because it, then there would be an extension on extension, on on an extension.
But I think there was a, there was a comment from Zach that even in the oldest, in the oldest maps, that the back extension had already been documented in one of the oldest maps. And so it it that existed and that had been documented from eighteen fifty four.
Yeah, yeah, that was in in Zach's report and, yeah. The extension's been there for a long, long time.
So.
Um.
So Judith, you you'd like to have.
I'm wondering.
You'd like to have a small hit.
All right, this was, this is the original roof line.
Uh huh.
And if you drop down this part, who knows? I mean, this is new. And so is this part dropped down a bit? And then this. Oops, sorry, this came up to um. See how this comes up to the roof almost? And this could do the same thing.
So would the, would the pointed, if the if the dormer on that new small window were a um a triangle, right?
Right.
Would that break up the line that takes the front pitch of the roof all the way to the back? So does that give you a perception of breaking the line?
That's what I think, you you're asking for, right?
Mm hmm. And um and and aligning these windows because this looks kind of odd. If they all aligned with each other, it might be all right.
I thought you liked.
I do.
Okay, um. So. Tiffany, do you have more to present to us?
I don't, so if the board has comments, I'm happy to take them back to Anthony. Um, I I, as I said, I don't believe there'd be any problem with changing the the outline of the dormer to a peaked roof and making the window a line properly.
I'd like to see if he can incorporate the the suggestions.
Yeah, that and that might be helpful.
Do you want us to take a vote now or are you wanting to take that back to to Anthony?
I I'm happy to take it back to him and and come back with that revision.
Okay.
If you have some time, the client's timeline is.
All right, does anybody have any more comments or thoughts?
No, I, but if he could do a a diagram of the new idea and when he comes back, yeah.
You can have my say. And and um. So I will take a motion to table this until the next meeting.
And for the record, our meeting is May ninth.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll leave this to ten page. Okay, so this is. I'm I'm assuming it's one presentation, but it's. One fifty two Division Street. And this is the part of we're discussing the application for the proposed solar panels.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Are you Mr. Hawker?
Yes.
Okay. Well, identify yourself for the record, please.
Malice Walker, this is my life.
Welcome to both of you. Yeah. So, would you like to make your?
Uh, yes, I did outline this in my last letter to you. I hope you received it. If you're correct.
Mm hmm.
Um, so I know my um the the solar company, the private P logic presented previously. So I wanted to come first into this meeting to talk about it. I think it was made clear that because there's one small spot where it is visible from the street, that we'll have to go to the ZBA. So we'll do that subsequently. But since this is already a motion to discuss with you, I just wanted to finish this paper. Because if you obviously say you're completely against this idea, there's no point going to the ZBA, there's no point paying you for it. So I really wanted to address some of your concerns and questions um about this plan for solar. Um. This solar plan is basically as effective as we can make it. We can't make any changes to it. So we either do it, we don't do it essentially. But there's a south facing section that's really critical, to get enough capacity in the system. The west facing sections of the roof, west is not as good as south and they're much smaller, you can't fit the amount of panels on there. So the size of the system, if we leave the west facing uh sections of the roof only. Um, it just makes the system not worthwhile to pursue. So the south facing uh side is really key. West facing is completely away from the street in the other direction, so not visible at all from the front. The south facing section of the roof, I don't know if you've had the chance to actually come by and look at, look at the house. But it's had this very specific angle. Um, and it's the one on the top uh there. So that's facing on the drive of its side of the house. Only if you're sitting, if you're literally in the corner of the green, that's uh obviously our house. Can you see that there would be, can you actually see that um section? Front of the house, most angles across um on fourteen, across Division Street, when outside the house. You cannot see what's on top of that south facing section of uh of roof. So obviously, that's a.
That's a judge.
That's a uh uh an image of having a good look from the bar, which no one can see. Um, so you really have to see it in person to understand the significance of that south facing roof. Now, we are historic village. Obviously, I fully respect historic preservation in a village like, I'm one of the strangest villages in all of uh the United States. Um, the US Department of Interior has had guidelines, as I think you're aware of. And if you look at that website, there are a number of examples of solar and where they say it's acceptable and not acceptable. Quite often, while the end of date is acceptable, is on a non-original aspect of the of the of the building. Um, this is not an original site. That's that's the original section of the house here. This was a previous addition, when we're redoing the addition of my knowledge, you can see. So this is not an original uh roof section. And if you look at those examples on the part of Interior's website, National Park Services, which shows the um the guidelines, I sent you the link. There's examples of houses which are very clearly historic, that have it at the side and at the back and are not obviously visible. It's not, uh, but they are slightly visible. So if you look, I think our plans are inconsistent with some of those examples that are on the um on the National Parks Service website. There's absolutely no guidelines there that say historical buildings should never have solar. That is not their intention at all, but I can understand. I think they are trying to encourage solar in a sensible uh manner. What I'm trying to do here is do exactly that, make this as sensible as possible. Uh, it it shouldn't really disrupt the general historic aesthetic um from the front of the building. Um, and it's just a very subtle addition of solar to the south and west facing sections uh of of the roof. And if you can stop by, I'm happy to give you a tour, help you show you the exact spots where uh it is that it is not um visible.
Well, Zach and I walked the site together, so I'm going to ask other people to give us their thoughts. And then I'll give you mine. Okay, so.
I think that this is, you know, a really good example, showing us where they are. And I have, I've also walked around the house.
Uh huh.
And um, you know, I I I have mixed feelings about the solar, but a part of me feels like that it's coming. And that we shouldn't, it it should be encouraged in a way. And uh, the code is not against having a historical house. And I am, and when I looked through the folder, there were letters from the neighbors or neighbor, I guess one neighbor.
Three, three nine.
Three, three different neighbors that they were, uh, they approve that they don't, they're not offended by it, they're not worried about it. So that's what I will have to say.
Michelle?
Um, I I think if I recall correctly, when we first had this post, someone had mentioned um about a glare that you get off of the panels. Um, but that's, that's not affecting the direct neighbor, um, I guess to the east, right?
Um, yes, I have a couple of points on that. And I know there's concerns about glare. And um. So. For my research, metal roofs are a far bigger problem than glare. And I know a number of residents in the village have issues with neighbors who have metal roofs, which are reflecting glare straight into their, like kitchen window or anything like that. And some of the facts I found was I, in my, in my letter, I think that the reflectance of solar panel, next to the set, this is a typical charcoal metal roof, it's about thirty percent. So metal roofs are a far bigger problem and they have no code restriction against metal roofs or anything, or roofs everywhere in the village. So that's my first point. Second point is, um, I think there is a difference between tested solar roofs, um, such as the one on nineteen Howard Street. Uh, and a regular, a regular solar panel. This is a regular solar panel. I was trying to do tested solar roof two years ago, I got off on that idea. This is a regular solar panel, they are coated with an anti-reflective uh coating. And furthermore, this angle really cannot bother any neighbors. I know something in other situations might be different, but this, to the way these roof sections are going, they're not gonna be um projecting any glare down towards sort of living space about.
And the, what kind of roof are, would be around the panel? What's the plan?
Oh, we have, um, you've already approved our roof tiles.
So it's sear or is it the the asphalt?
It's actually, it's actually what we call an environemental, it's a, it's a synthetic, which you uh would see the channel. Um, which we already approved previously.
And what color is that?
Uh, it's black.
Black?
Okay.
And what does the neighbor to that side see?
On something.
Do do, is there property at that level?
Black roof with a black solar panel.
Is it high enough that they can see?
On this side?
On this side, yeah.
On this side, they have um. Uh, I mean, they have a bedroom on the ground floor and they have a bedroom on the upstairs floor. Um, but this angle, you really cannot see from their house because that is almost, it's kind of flattish, it's not a steep roof, it's a low angle. So um, they basically.
So they're unable to see it or unlikely to see the 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 roof nor get any glare from there.
Something also over there that's saying that.
Yeah, yeah, so that. Will the panels be flush to the roof?
As flush as they can be. I mean, I don't know the technical answer of how close that can be. And just so you understand, the reason it's all came up now is I was gonna deal with this much later on. But um, in building the roof, builders advised me that to do so, you have to build in the standings for the panels as you're doing the roof.
Hmm.
As opposed, because if I didn't do that.
A retrofit.
Finish the roof, but then they have to rip up the roof altogether again.
Oh, geez.
Huge cost and and risk.
Yeah.
Um, so they put in these little struts, I guess, that are just part of the roof structure. And then they they just support the panels, which is just right on top of the tiles.
Mm hmm.
Any other question? So, all right, so I walked, I'm sorry, yes?
I haven't, could I speak?
Sure, I'm sorry.
I just, I just wanted to say that I'm with Bethany in that I'm. Uh, ambivalent. I lo- I love the idea of solar panels, I think it's the right thing to do. And um. On the other hand, this is historic and I I believe if you were walking down Division Street, you would look up and you could see that. Uh, it's mitigated though by the fact that you say the roof will be black. So if the roof is black and the solar panels are black, then maybe they won't be so noticeable. And I'm I'm just tempted to think, you know, solar panels are the wave of the future. And um. I'm in favor of them and I just, I don't know what to say about this.
That's just one of that, I really appreciate that comment and I do think they're the future. And I, I actually, just for a popular echo, I think the village needs to find a way to get this balanced, to encourage more. But whilst still preserving the village as, yeah, as a real wish. Um, to your point about seeing when you're walking down Division. You'd have to be like literally one spot outside our neighbor's house here or across the street on, standing on the green in a very specific spot to really, to really see it. So my point with that is if you're generally walking past, generally driving past, like it's not obviously noticeable to anyone. I think you really would have to look for it in a very specific spot to be able to uh see that. Um, you know, they're not on the front, obviously this is the most prominent front section of the house, yeah, they're not there.
Yeah.
Um, so it's just one particular uh angle where they're visible.
And then my other concern would be, of course, if we approve this, all of a sudden, everybody's gonna say, hey. Solar panels on the historic district are okay now. And uh, you know, who knows what will happen? I mean, it seems like if we were to approve this, we would have to be, say. That um. We approve it on the basis of the fact that you you absolutely can only see this from a couple of little spots where you say that that's possible. Because um otherwise, other buddy, everybody's gonna use this as an example of how they can do this. And it doesn't matter if you can see it going down the street. So. We would somehow have to write something in about how visible they are.
This is just on for informal feedback from you guys, because it does require ZBA action before you can even consider it. So.
Okay.
This is just getting your feedback.
But to, to your point, it starts a precedent. And once you start that, it it, you know, everybody comes back and says, well, you you, the sightline was five feet wide. And and I am only asking for eight feet, the next person is looking for sixteen feet.
It's interesting to me, because, um, I have been on, I think I'm the longest, I've been on board the longest.
Yes.
And we actually gave permission for the church to have solar panels.
Which church?
Which church? The church, the church.
Oh, the church!
Yes, before it was owned by the church.
Oh, my goodness!
It's such a dumb name, I get the name of that.
Oh, we, we mean when it was really still a church?
No, well, it had been, it was, um, I can't think of the woman's name, but she was gonna have her fabric, her weaving, Elizabeth, right? Who's ever with me?
Elizabeth Dow.
And, uh, so it, it, they chose not to do it. But it was approved, it was, and then she, you know, she left, and, and who came along didn't want to do it. So I'm just saying that it isn't grand new.
Is there, is there a ser- serendipitous blessing from God? All right, so, uh.
You found that interesting.
My turn, my turn.
That's already been done.
So I walked this with Zach. I was, I was looking at the panels, and I do agree with you that there are very low possibilities of visibility from the street. Number two, I was concerned about the solar glare. What is not evident here to the viewers is how the adjoining, your neighboring houses are constructed. And how their windows don't really fall into a sphere where they would have glare. And I don't know, do you have, um, it, it wouldn't even be necessarily on a survey, because the, the neighboring pieces are property, but if you go there and, and actually look, it, it is, and you have a, you have a pine tree somewhere, and I said, evergreen, I said, well, if that is, if there's any slight opportunity for there to be some sort of glare at a certain time of year, that if that's maintained, and I don't remember if it's on your property or your neighbor's property, but it's kind of in a niche or a nook, that, that would obscure everything. So, specific to this case, I have no objections. Now, the other thing to point out is that this is an extension that we're putting it on. So it really is not historic, so to speak. It's not historic property, and, um.
Except for the front, that little bit in the front.
But that's, that's facing away from the street.
But you know, even that, and even that, it, it, as we saw in the, the code, the code does not say that if it's historic.
The code is focused, uh, focused on sightlines.
Seen, right?
Right, it's on sightlines, so, that's, I, I, you know, I didn't think I needed to address that, but we have approved panels, uh, for even newer houses. But, but we denied people the street side, uh, approval, or sighting of the panels, is a better way to put it.
Any, any of it.
So my opinion is, I don't have any problems with it. I walked with the consult, the historic consultant with it, um, we agreed on this, and so I think we don't have a strong sense of, uh, of concern about. Does anyone want to put it any different way?
Very good.
Okay.
So, I'll tackle the ZVA, see what they say, then I guess we're back to.
Oh, but, all right, you haven't been to the ZVA yet.
No, no, because we don't have the, he wants to get our sense.
Oh, I see.
Before he wants to.
I get it.
Bothered to go through the trouble of going to the ZVA.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right.
Um, no, we don't need to make a mo, he was just asking for my opinion.
You're gonna make a motion to table them.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
No, this shouldn't even be on their agenda, you're just gonna let it go, that was a discussion item, it doesn't need to be tabled.
Okay.
When, when they, when and if they get ZVA, they come back with a formal application.
Okay, okay, so this was discussion?
Right, now. Now you're still standing here, because the next item is one fifty-two, and it's regarding your, your, your door window design.
So the glass around the front door.
Is your, you have an architect or somebody, or Carrie's doing this?
No, we have photos.
It hasn't been favored.
Discussion.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just start talking, so our, our, the original door, we are keeping, it's a lovely thick old door. But around the door is glass, and on the gla, and all the glass is simple paint, this is what I'd like to copy, is the glass around the door. This is the house across the street from the Watch Kings, that beautiful house with the swing, and this is what the, the, um, glass around our doors. It's, there's old paint cakes on, and it's all rotted, so we were thinking about trying to preserve it, but it's like, it's impossible. It's, it's, it's so rotted and it's so thin, that, and the glass is all broken, I just, the builder doesn't really see how it can.
It's, it's, it's wood or metal?
It's wood around it, so it's all rotted.
So. I'd like you to bring this up when you come back.
I'm saying.
Because Zach will be here.
I would rather, yeah.
But he's, they're coming back for solar panels, but this we can talk about right now. And I think we need to replace that in kind, I don't think that, I'm sorry, I don't think we can accept what you want to do with it, I think we need, this is historic.
If you didn't cut me off, I was gonna say, that the student of Zach, he was gonna, Zach says anything that's wood can be rebuilt.
Yeah.
And, and so that's kind of the standard, this is, now, this is just the opposite of what we discussed, this is high visibility, it's on the street. And, um, you know, if you have to replicate it, I think so, but to change it and copy somebody else's, although it's lovely, I, I think we should try to do everything we can.
I'm sure we can try to replicate, I just, I don't think we can use that.
The question base is.
No, no, I can't think that.
Because they would be replicated.
Because there's globs of old paint.
No, we, that's.
Yeah.
Do you have a shot of your front door with the?
We, we understand that this cannot be refurbished, whatever, but what you need to do, right, is to come, is to look into that. Where it can be, it's not just plain glass.
I wanna make it, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I cut you off, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Let me just make this, let me just make this statement. You're coming back.
We are coming back.
We have people who are waiting here. You, you gave a really good, very thorough presentation about the solar panels. And I think, I'd like to give you a sense, since you are coming back, and, and let us kind of proceed through the agenda.
Well, I think there are, your idea, your, your, you have said now that you'll come back.
Because they wanna put it with the door back on the house, so I just need to know what I'm allowed to do, that's the, that's the thing.
You're not allowed to do away with this, you need to replace it in kind. Meaning that whatever you create to flank your door, needs to look exactly like that, but clean and not rotten.
When the project's finished, yeah, if you want to put the temporary door up there now, you can.
Well, have you looked into the history of this doorway, do you know if it's original, or if somebody put it in twenty years ago, or what?
I'm not sure, I know that the front door, I'm pretty sure the front door is.
Sarah, yes. This is what it was, this is what it was.
That's definitely original.
This is what it is now.
That's what it is now.
No, that's what it is now.
Sarah Nightingale, who has the gallery downtown.
Okay.
Did, did this to her door.
Oh, she did?
On, uh, yes, speak to, you, you should stop and see her.
Sarah Nightingale?
Up on, yes, it's up on Madison Street, the house, the house.
Yeah, so that's a closer picture of that, is that it?
Yeah, and that's the thing, the problem is that I can have it, because it's like, it's literally stuck together, all the things, blocks at point, I know it's been done over the years.
Replicate it with some.
So we're gonna figure out how to replicate it.
See, but.
Yeah.
I just don't want to use that.
Who knows what they made, right?
No, you can't use that, it's, it's absolutely.
Okay, I wanted to ask, okay, thanks.
I mean, I think they're not here, but you have to replicate it.
Yep.
We, we appreciate that, and we're trying to be, we're trying to be flexible and accommodating.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
So we'll back on after the ZVA meeting.
Right.
Yes.
This one, this for the doors.
Yeah, you can come back with the next.
With your plan.
But I'm just saying, you might as well visit us one time. Thank you.
This can be on for the next meeting, ZVA's gonna take one more solar.
Oh, so I can go back?
Yeah, you go back at the next meeting, they just made down with the door.
For decision right now?
Whatever they're asking for.
This is for a decision.
They just want to replace.
No, it wasn't, yeah.
Do I need to come back?
Oh, yeah.
If you're liking and liking kind, you don't need to have some people from there.
Right, I'll replace in kind, it's fine.
Yep. Can you send that picture to the, um, to Carrie, so that there's a record of what that looks like?
Yeah.
So that we can make sure that what you replaced is exact?
Is liking.
Right, exactly, I'm not sure it's an exact, but liking kind, sure.
In appearance.
Right, okay.
They'll be checking it, see, investigate.
Okay, right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so.
So, I, I moved the, I'm not sure, we didn't approve this, did we, until we see the liking sign?
No.
Okay.
We're asking them to come back.
I'm suggesting that we table this until their next scheduled appearance. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Hold on, you have to explain that, because you said to replace it in liking kind, so now you want them to know how our code reads. They have a building permit, if they replace something in liking kind, they don't need approval from the ARB, so do you want them to come back?
We want something that's identical to what's existing, is, is identical.
You wanna see it.
Liking kind can be, from a constructive.
Okay, so then don't use that word.
Don't use that word.
Then we have to be very clear and tell them what you want, and if you want them to come back.
Thank you, Carrie. So let me, let me just amend things. What I, well, let me just confirm this, I'll, let me state it, and then the, the board, uh, confirm. What we are approving is that.
You're not approving anything, right? You're not approving anything.
Okay. And what we, what we are suggesting or will accept in the future is an identical replacement of the existing door and entrance.
So just write that on the, on the CVA, write that as a condition of the approval of the CVA, and you can approve it.
Okay.
Easy.
Okay.
Tonight, you may sure.
If it's before the board, there's an active CVA application.
Okay.
But that's what you're approving on it, and that's it.
Right.
Fine.
So we're, what is the word, what's the wording again?
It's an identical replacement.
Yes.
It's just an identical replacement of the existing door.
Of materials.
The door they're keeping, no, and the side lights.
The door, the side lights, the entrance, the entranceway.
Yeah.
Okay, better work, thank you.
Okay.
It's the, uh.
It's the side lights, side light and decorations on the side light?
But, aren't those, aren't all those little cross pieces made of metal?
You put in the wood.
They're made of wood, apparently, I don't see how that's even possible.
Which is our signature, are we, this is always.
Just to be, perhaps woodworking.
Woodwork. It's woodworking. Looks like, I mean, all the doors inside harbor, the fancy side lights are, have, they're lead and glass. So, I don't know how they're gonna.
It's quite rotted.
That one was done with wood, I guess.
It looks like tormite.
Well, good luck to them.
Be close to ten thousand dollars.
With the same materials.
So the condition is that.
Right, do you want to, Michelle?
Good tears.
Today, yes, I just had to date it.
It's the eleventh.
Okay.
So they make a motion?
I'll make a motion, that we approve the replacement of the entranceway. To include the door, the side lights, the, uh, and the glass all around.
There's the glass all around, there's, at the top, top and sides.
Um, as currently exists. And that we're gonna get pictures of the current condition and the current, um, design, so that we can.
We have that, we have.
We have that, you already have it, okay. So, um, can I get a second?
Second.
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 Any discussion, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, send a photo.
Okay, so. Two eighty-seven Main Street, oh, that was that, no, two eighty-seven Main Street. All right, please, I don't say it, so.
One, trying out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Please proceed.
It's just that I just asked.
I made that article one time, she said.
Yes, yes.
Anyway, um, thank you. Um, so yeah, quick reminder of what this project is, um, uh, so our home is a five-bedroom, two-story house, with an existing single-story, uh, section in the back. Um, and we would like to move one of our bedrooms from the ground floor to upstairs, uh, by building a rear addition above the existing kitchen. Uh, this is out of sight from the front of the house, uh, but I did include this 3D rendering, only to show the most extreme potential view of the addition. Uh, in reality, this view is obscured by the torn-up neighboring house. Um, so you'd actually have to be able to see through the building to see this view, uh, and also be fifteen feet tall in the middle of the road. But, um, I didn't want to just show nothing, so, here you go. The, um, uh, oh yeah, I'm sorry, I thought you could stay on the first, um, page, thank you. Uh, and then the other side is, uh, completely obscured by the code daily car park, but no one actually can see that unless you're parking your car on your way to work. Um, and yeah, that's it, so. Okay, sorry, could you scroll to the page eighty-two hundred, please?
Eight hundred and fifty?
Correct. Great. So, um, so just some input that we've had from the ARB thus far, um, you know, as a reminder, one of the first things we did was to schedule a discussion item, um, and a site visit with this board, um, uh, looking at our initial proposed plans. Your feedback, um, included lowering the, the roof ridge, uh, preserving all original windows, naturally. Uh, restoring the original, uh, the missing chimney in the front. Um, adhering to similar materials and style as the front of the house. Um, and then also, uh, set the addition back from the, uh, existing wall line, um, in, just to minimize visibility, if we can. Um, so yeah, we incorporated all of those suggestions, um, starting with lowering the roof ridge, uh, the rear addition by two or three feet. Um, making it a similar height as the front roof, um, again, not visible. Preserved all original windows, uh, we're restoring the missing chimney, um, that was part of the original house. Uh, and set back the rear addition from the existing first floor wall. Um, so following that, uh, discussion item, we then received approval from zoning. Um, and submitted for the ARB approval. And so in our last meeting or presentation, uh, with this board, I heard your feedback, uh, and made those additional amendments to the plans. If you could scroll to the next page, please, Carrie, two oh one, thank you. Um, so yeah, so we removed, uh, a proposed window that was stationed in the driveway, I think, Michelle, you pointed that out, that was, so that's gone. No more proposed windows in that, uh, front part of the house. Um, we pivoted the roof line, that was Zach's, uh, I think, main suggestion of the rear addition to be perpendicular with the front roof. And I think that's actually how we originally had it, and so, in the original designs, um, which I think looks much better, so thank you. Um, we also further lowered the roof line again, so now making the rear addition, uh, ridge lower than the front of the house. Um, let's see, what else? And that also reduces the overall mass, the, uh, the actual, you know, the added mass is highlighted in grains. Um. So yeah, we made these reductions in spite of several examples in nearby historic homes that were recently approved by the village to build rear additions several times larger than the original front of the house, including, but not limited to Forty-One Glover, uh, where the rear addition is built at three foot eight inches higher than the original front roof. Uh, Fifty-Nine Howard, where the rear addition is six foot seven inches taller than the original roof. And Thirty-One Glover, I didn't measure it, but it's a towering structure, uh, over the original, um. Just as examples, and it goes without saying that I'm not proposing anything as large as these. Uh, in fact, our rear roof is now lower, as I mentioned. And having incorporated all of the board's feedback, both from the discussion item and also from our biggest public presentation, we, uh, and we also have letters. We, uh, and we also have letters on file already from, uh, the past. But I don't know, we didn't mention that in the last presentation, um, from two immediate neighbors who fully support the project. The end.
I think it looks a lot better. It really feels more cohesive now to me. Um, and, uh, you know, the way that you've explained it, because you really cannot see this from the front. Um, but it just doesn't look as. I don't know the proper term for it, but it just looks more like, I'll leave it at that.
I wouldn't want anything to be overbearing either. I mean, it's, and we're really, you know, the goal of this is just to move, you know, how big it went upstairs. So.
Any other comments or thoughts?
I think it's, um, good and it's, you clearly followed all the suggestions. Um, I speak as a neighbor and it seems fine. Well, no, I mean, I'm five doors down. I don't know, four. Yes, I live there and I think it's fine.
Anybody else?
Um, I think it's much better. Um, it, it was very protruding before. Um, I'm curious about the front, um, like the facade and the front portal. Is like the porch gonna be preserved with all those little?
Yeah, so I've already actually, in recent years, um, meticulously restored that porch in kind. Exactly like it was before. Um, I can't, you know, I'm now an expert in scroll work.
Okay, good.
It's, because it was completely rotten when I moved in and, um, you know, so it was a passion project to restore that for which. And if you look real close, I'm convinced that the, uh, original cool walls have little whales in them.
Oh, they might. Yeah, they might. That's cool. Yeah, I was just asking because I don't see those details here, but I'm glad that you have taken care of that already.
No, my mom has here for a while since I was almost here and my architect's been quite on that. So I haven't wanted to like put additional pressure on him with, you know, with sort of.
Yes.
Things like that.
Yeah.
But yes, and it's clearly marked on the plans by the way that, um, all of the facades of untouched remains as existing.
Mm-hmm. Good.
And you have a consent?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, oh, that's Mr. Gibbs here. And then we move on to the consent agenda items. All fifteen or something. Um, do I have to read all fifteen? Liz, it's my habit to read. Okay.
You have to make a motion to approve the agenda, consent agenda items.
Fine, thank you. Uh, so we're gonna, um, deviate from my habit of reading all of them, but because it's fifteen. Let's see if you guys fifteen minutes to get out of here. Um, so I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda items, number one through fourteen. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We post consent agenda. We'll sign those. We can sign those. I'll sign those.
Megan.
Okay.
This is like with a two person.
Oh, okay. So now we're gonna move and open. This is a public hearing for Chivoni. Is this, is this a new business? Number two.
Oh, what? We're not doing the number one?
Yeah, is somebody here to represent the, the Chivoni family of forty-eight Main Street?
I believe anybody's here.
All right, so should we take that? To the end of the meeting? Was second Paul?
It's, it's just.
Oh, it's, it's just the doorway.
Yeah, it's just the doorway.
Yeah.
But they just submitted it and they're already here. And the, uh, building inspector wanted it to be reviewed, um, by you guys.
I don't, okay, what's.
Um, they wanna replace their entryway.
This is the entrance.
Yeah, and what do they wanna do? Because.
They're gonna, you know how the door goes in now? Everyone's going, well, they're gonna have, they're not gonna have that.
They're gonna bring it out front and probably do something.
Doors are open like this.
Do something with the grating.
Great.
Yeah.
They put in the new door at the back, so now they've got a new door. It's a sliding door or a.
Yeah, it's a sliding.
Yeah, it's gonna open like this, I think.
Oh, yep.
Great. They can get in now.
Much better.
Uh, any other discussion? I will move that we accept the, uh, Chivoni application for the reconfiguration of the front entrance.
One second. That's the new one.
I just want these ladies to look at this.
Sign the.
That makes sense. Yeah, okay, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
So who's ever coming up next on the agenda, please come forward while we get some signatures taken, Carrie.
Forty-five Dennis. Forty-five Dennison.
So this, I will move that we open the public hearing on forty-five Denison Road. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
I'm Karen Payber, I'm the attorney for the owner, five Division River LLC. I'm here on behalf of the, um, the applicant, which is Steve Womenski. He couldn't make it. Um, he told me that originally that this, uh, project was approved, but there was an issue with the size of the lot and, uh, the health department. So I have, um, I have what the existing is for demolition and then, um, to approve. So this is just what the house looks like and this is on the corner of the Denison and middle, middle line highway. Um, if you pass that around and then, um, basically I have a, I have a drawing of what the house, uh, looked like. Uh, from what I understand, it was a little bit smaller and now it's, um, larger and accommodating. Um, the mistakes that are made about the size of the house, um, kind of colors. You know, white.
Okay.
Brown and, uh, I think it's here. Well, kind of a modern design. It's in a wooded area. We'd like to see that area. We're not asking for, um, um, the pool, um, in the house to be approved.
Okay.
Um, because we have drawings of that. And the health department, I guess, okay, they're the large size, the full size, and then give you uh, smaller ones, but there was an issue with the dates and the size. So now we have the official.
And how the pool, is the pool there?
The, no, uh, this is, this is the.
It's on, it should be on the survey that we're getting here now.
Yeah, it's not, um, sorry, the, the pool house has not been like this designed yet. Thank you.
But has it been located here on the survey?
Yes, and what, does it tell like what's around it and what?
Here's the pool house, cover deck and the pool up here in the center of the top.
But again, it will have to come back.
Yeah.
Over with that. This was just something that I, I guess when they went start building, uh, I realized that they didn't stay, they should have came before, but I'm not being. And so I was asked to, to come back. And we can see it's kind of been a, it's a similar house, but they're going for a track upon it. That's kind of similar design. That's all blonde. I mean, obviously this is where they just. And I have to, um, we'll have some.
This is public care. This is public care.
Yeah, it's just a public. This is all the kind of work.
Well, do we get to see that? Do we get to see what's going to be built?
Can you just comment on the, what was the error? Was the error in the design or was the error in the engineering or what was the error?
The lot was, uh, a little bit, the lot was a little bit smaller, so the house was made smaller, a little smaller, but it's the same, same design. Um, well, no, no, it's been.
No.
A little large, right? It's a little large, but the same type of, uh, colors.
And property design, okay.
Oh, jeez.
So, um, if you go down Denison Road, every, uh, basically every house on that street is a pretty traditional house. A lot of them are ranches, single story. Um, and I know we're not in the historic district, but I wonder what placing a house of this aesthetic would do to the neighborhood there.
This house is on the corner, right?
Yes.
It's on the corner. Because if you go up Middle Line, these.
Yeah, but isn't it across the street, right outside Sag Harbor borders?
If you go up.
So we, we care about Sag Harbor.
Right, no, I just.
Whatever's within the border. I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, think about Middle Line. These are the kind of houses you say, pretty much.
Well, this isn't on, this is on Denison. And if, have you, have you walked down Denison recently? So you know that every house on that street is traditional.
Yes, I know that. And it's, I, what do you, well, I, it doesn't matter. Yeah, it's a little more, yeah. And we can't, well, whatever, I'm good.
And I grow up in a, so you make your statements. You don't have to, you know, go back and forth. You make your statements. And then you can make your statement and they can be different sometimes.
Okay.
You don't have to come to any of that consensus.
So this is what you guys approved in April of last year. Okay, thank you. Like I said, I'm coming in to.
Yeah.
So this has already been approved, this style?
Yeah, I think that was a mistake.
Somehow this looks bigger or.
But I'm sorry, you said this is not historic. This is not in this historic.
Correct, correct. It's not in the district, yes. It's, it's in Sag Harbor Village, though.
No, I understand.
Um, you've changed the colors, um.
I'm sorry.
In fact, we, was it this one? We have asked for.
This is gray. This is screaming white.
We had asked for something more muted, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I remember this now.
This now.
A young man came to present it in front of us.
All right, um, because, um, the thing we approved, uh, really, the, the, your new idea, uh, to me, does not look very much, I mean, it's similar, but, uh, it's much more in your face. And I don't know if that's just because of the rendering. Um, but I'm struck by this very large garage that seems to, oh, incidentally, there's a house attached, but it's, you know, but you, you go in and you see garage. And, um, and then in the original house, there were these nice muted grays and muted wood stains. And here we have bright white and what seems to be very bright, um, sort of beige. And so that it looks much more. It just hits your eye pretty hard.
Okay, so you prefer not to have a large front half?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and look at the, the garage seems to be larger and brighter. If you see the, see the, the garages.
Oh, so you prefer gray?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Can, can I also, well, it's also the size, the size of the garage. I, I also think it's the, the difference between these two. I think the older one was, the older design was a lot more muted to your point. I don't think it's just about the gray, but it's also about the fact that the new garage design is probably glass or that, that see-through. And so the, the, um, slats are much more prominent. And so the thing that you see first is the garage door and not the property. And so instead of having that be a much more recessive, uh, perspective, it, it's the primary thing that you see. And I think it will be quite prominent.
I like what was approved.
Yeah.
Well, it's probably not, it's more of a modification.
I mean, even with the size difference, I think, even if it's that same size, but the garage door itself is much more muted and the way it's off, it would be, it would look better. It will blend in better to your point about it stylistically, it's different. I think this would be.
So if the garage weren't glass, change to white, right? So that the whole thing just receives a lot more.
So it looks like the original garage or the garage.
Could you, um, could you make the dimensions the same as the original garage? Because this garage looks much bigger, much bigger. Uh, I mean, it might just be the angle, but I don't think so.
Okay, so the dimensions of the garage.
Well, this is, this is this might be a rendering issue because something's happening over here. This might be a rendering issue, you know?
Okay.
It does look bigger. I agree with you. Uh, we really have to look at the plane. But.
Yeah.
I'm glad everybody caught it because, as I remember, we had this, this discussion in terms of selection of the exterior colors with him before.
Yes.
And it might have even been almost like a pastel sort of color. It was, I remember it being like a, kind of bright. But we asked him to do this, so the fact that he's decided to to take another, it's, it's, it's nothing other than we, we have a fairly good memory here. So, um, and, and Carrie, thank you very much for reminding us. But, um, so those, I think are pretty much the comments. Anybody else want to make? And you understand the reason?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so it goes back. Right.
There's no, there's no chance of turning the garage sideways so that you go in sideways, is there? Because then you wouldn't be looking at this giant garage.
The way that. The way the garage is here. Even, I mean, it doesn't have to be gray. It can be the wood, whatever. Just, you just don't want it to be the way you had it, that's fine.
Is it, is it actually glass or is it just painted white?
That's okay. That's an important question.
The, I, I've seen a few of these types of garages and they tend to be glass or plaster, like the heavy plastic.
Like, like for you, I think I just, I like walk through a lot of walking. I've seen garages like this where I'm sitting inside. Yeah, so I know.
And I think going back to Meg's point, the whole thing is by making this muted, although it's a transition, it does, it's not drawing, jawing to the
Yes.
uh, aesthetic of the neighbors that are more traditional. Okay. Um, any other further discussion on this? So this is, uh, this is the public hearing anyway. There's a public want to comment on this?
Anybody on Zoom? They're gonna see more.
I move that we, uh, that be table this to me. Thank you, a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Those are approvals? Those are consent.
Consent agenda, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Oden, come forward, please, and identify yourself.
Second or third people say you're on the program.
Just give your address, say your name and address, please.
Hi, Walter Oden, forty-six Terry Drive. So, um, to the members of the board, my name is Walter Oden, my family and I respectfully, with the pressure and consideration of approval of our application for certificate of appropriateness for our home at forty-six Terry Drive. Uh, our application is driven by a deep commitment to creating a safe and sustainable, beautiful home for our family, which also blends with the unique character and environment, so sensibilities of Sag Harbor and the Sanes community more specifically. If this looks familiar to you, we presented this multiple times, be sure we were on the right path with our vision. Um, however, what began as a second story addition onto the current structure has been modified to rebuild the entire structure due to inferior cement block foundational support. We propose a twenty-two hundred eighty-four square foot two-story off-site constructed home over a poured concrete foundation. We've gotten ZBA approval, we've gotten health board approval. The home will house, house an office, kitchen, four bedrooms, a lounge, dining area, a roof deck to support our local home lifestyle, and it's part of the water views that are afforded this property. We understand the importance of maintaining the aesthetic and structural integrity of our community. Our application is the result of careful planning, thoughtful consideration of our neighbors and the environment, and a heartfelt commitment to contributing positively to this community. We have engaged with local architects and planners to ensure the plans reflect the buildings' values of preservation, sustainability, and community, but more importantly, we sat with our neighbors at forty-eight Terry, which surrounds this property. Uh, and modified our plans to accommodate their feedback, including and, uh, adding transom windows on the side of the house, east side that faced them. Adding flower boxes to the deck for privacy and transition changes to the actual facade. Um, cladding to make the house more interesting from their perspective. To that end, I have a letter of support that I know has been sent to you all, uh, from the neighbors at forty-eight Terry. Um, in seeking the certificate of appropriateness, we are motivated by the desire to create a home that respects the natural and built heritage of Sag Harbor. Meets the needs of our family and sets a precedent for thoughtful, environmentally conscious development. We believe that our project will not only enhance the character of our neighborhood, but also demonstrate a commitment to the values that make Sag Harbor a unique and cherished place. We respectfully request your support, and with that, I will stop.
That was pretty succinct.
So, uh, if you look here, it, it is a, you know, twenty-two hundred square foot home, it's, it's fairly modest and it's built on the exact same footprint of the house that exists today. Um, I think it'll add to the character of this community. And in the spirit of Mrs. Meredith, founder of this community, who was a self-taught architect, I'm pretty, I pretty much love this house in its design. So I'll leave it at that.
She was not the architect of this house, though.
Who, Ms. Meredith?
Yeah.
No, not from the grave, no.
No, I mean, I mean, it's the original.
No, 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 she was not.
Right, cause it's no advantage.
This is not a contributing house.
Right, okay.
Well, the, the construction of this is, it's gonna be built offsite, is it a modular?
It is, is built in, factory-built offsite, and we do that just because we, we think that that is, uh, lessens the disruption to the community. Um, and I've also brought samples of the material that'll be used on the outside cladding, which is James Arty siding. Horizontal on the, in the darker sections and cedar, white cedar on the, uh, other section.
And those will be vertical?
Those will be vertical, yes.
And that, that lot has a ton of very tall trees. And so at the moment, the, the single floor means that the trees are going up quite high. How, what's your, what's your expectation for, uh, the impact of the second story property on the trees?
Great question, we're not touching the trees other than trimming them up, and that, all the trees that sit there on the buffer of that property will, will stay. Only thing that we're adding is in, if you look at the survey, we're adding a, a hedge around the, yeah, I don't know. Is that in there? In the rear yard, it's just a hedge of, of, um, evergreens, it's not, I, I have something. Oh, this is horrible, you can't even see it. But if you see here, the only thing we're adding, this already exists, we're just adding this portion here, to just give the rear yards some privacy.
Yeah.
And there's a sa- safety area back here.
Does anyone want to see this one? Anyone else?
I think.
So we're just adding that.
I saw.
Um, I just have a question about the, uh, deck upstairs.
Yes.
We have this. Uh, policy about, um, people having roof decks and the consideration of the neighbors. And whether you'll be having wild parties and, you know, loud music and looking over them.
Only if you come and hang out with me, I'll have. Actually, this, the, that front deck already exists, our neighbors are okay with it, the only thing that we, uh, did as a consideration was put that flower box on the back, and that's all they asked for. Um, we're fairly quiet, and you can only access that roof from inside the house. So whereas on the other one, you can access it from, uh, the, uh, front.
Street.
Street. So that's a private rooftop.
Can we go to the other view of it, Carrie? When it's like from the street looking? Yeah.
That, yeah.
Where the person is standing, that is a front entrance?
That is the front entrance, which is, it, it's, so the house right now, if you, if you look, were to look at it. Uh, that little indent is not there, so we're taking part of the inside of the house to do that, to create that.
So this is, this is Terry Drive.
This is Terry Drive you're looking at now. No, this is Meredith, I'm sorry, this is Meredith here, and Terry is here.
Terry's in the front, for right, yeah.
So the person's facing, their back is facing Meredith.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, so there are two, there are two decks.
There would be two roof decks, yeah, and I'm, and you, you talked about putting in the green hedge on the left side, east side of that, right?
East side, yes.
Uh, but do, are you anticipating one needed on the west side?
Not at all.
And no objections from the neighbors across the street?
It's, it is so far away from them, it, it's a non-factor.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's across the street.
Yeah.
Normally, I, uh, I'm not in favor of a larger house taking the place of a smaller house, but I think that this is the way that this neighborhood is going, and I think it fits in well.
Typically, they're, they're bigger than this, I mean, there are three thousand square feet coming in front of you, this is twenty-two hundred square feet.
Yeah, that's actually modest.
Megan, you'll be glad to know that the size of the lot does not permit anything other than a hot tub.
Oh, good. You, you don't need a pool, the beach is right there.
This is the material in terms of the color of the main side.
Okay, let me see.
Yes, and then this, it will be this, but in this color.
So what, um, what is this?
This is cedar, it, but it will be this color.
It'll be in that color.
Right, I brought the color.
Oh.
But this is the, the material.
Okay, so it's, it's smoother, it is not rich like that, okay, got it.
That's the rear.
Yeah.
Yes.
Like it's bright, it's dark.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it does.
Uh, does anyone have any other questions for Walter? Okay, anyone want to make a motion on this, uh?
I'll move to approve forty-six Terry Drive.
Second up.
All the favor?
I did. I did, sorry, yeah.
Thank you for your service.
Okay, and you can give lessons to architects anytime you want. Thank you. All right, who's the next? Uh, who's representing eleven Gold Rock Road?
Bye.
This is an application, right?
Thank you.
Kirsty Architect on the project.
It's, can I ask a quick question, Carrie, this is going to be treated as a, um.
No, this, um, well, you're right, he's gonna need a public hearing.
Okay.
So.
So we can't hold on this.
You know, you're, you're gonna make, we're gonna make a motion to, to a public hearing.
Oh, for sure, that's what I need.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you just say your name again?
Richard Hertz. Eleven Gold Rock Road is, I mean, they can probably, houses polished there years ago. Uh, it's quarter of Gold Rock Road and South Side of East. Uh. The house, I consider modern, that new on this bunch is charity, doesn't need, uh, one of the other models discussed tonight. Um, I believe you've got a rendering and drawings.
You guys. Hold on, you're repaid, keep waiting.
Yeah, this is, yeah.
There you go, it's up on the screen, it's.
I think this is how. Three thousand three hundred and forty, gross floor area.
I thought the listing advertises is six thousand.
Oh my goodness.
Six thousand, I don't think that on the property. The gross floor area is not allowed to be getting near six thousand.
Well, that's, that's why I'm curious why it was on the broker's site, the six thousand. There's a sign on the property, there, there used to be, I don't know if it's still there.
It was another house designed for property.
I see.
It's never built.
Right, okay, were you the same architect?
No.
So please proceed.
This is the.
And there are, and I apologize just to, it, there is an existing house or there is, it's.
Demolished there.
Okay.
This is the, Bill Center East. Property, side of the property. Front entrance here, um, various picture of standing scene, that'll move, various shades of gray. And this is the rear elevation opposite this one. And. This chimney hides solar panels, a few of them will be seen from the ground. And pyramid is something like this, it doesn't require any pure period, uh, pyramid areas, it's all within the sky plane.
Now, this isn't, I'm sorry, I thought, um, was that the north elevation, all the way till you get to, I thought you were gonna show us that.
So this is the south elevation, this is the Gold Rock Road side of the house. So because of the angle of the house, the three elevations will show all four sides of it.
Well, the north elevation is towards the water side.
The north is towards the water, yes.
What's, which one's the north view?
So it's, it's the north elevation, but it's fairly small part of the house and showed, you see the north side in this little section.
And then, and then, have we seen the west side, can you show us that, I lose track of that?
Um, the west side is the rear elevation.
This is the front, correct?
This is the back.
So this is the back, this is, this is the west side.
This is, west side is.
So the longer part of the house, sorry, faces hillside. And then the narrow part faces the water, which is to the north, is that right?
This narrow part faces the water, yes.
Okay.
And the slide of evergreen planting along the property line, I'm not sure if, um, Gold Rock property here, the neighbors, just the neighbors. Okay, so we don't control that, if it was on Gold Rock, then it would, uh, be staying there. Can't control that.
And what's the material that you're using for the siding?
Siding is shiplap stained by Canadian gray.
And you, you, you were here for the comment about the standing metal seams. Are you gonna do some sort of, uh, flat powder coating to it or something, or are you planning to have a?
It'll be a factory finish, uh. There's a rendering that shows the colors roughly.
Okay, is.
Do we have renderings?
Do we have the renders?
No, we do.
I don't think we've seen it, I didn't, I didn't see it.
So this is the front of the house.
Yeah.
Standing room, a little darker in gray than the sun. And the window frames would be black, they're very narrow, cause it's, um, modern, they're white cases, so the black is far from a job. I haven't any, that's ridiculous.
But this is the Gold Rock Road side.
Yeah, yeah.
This is hillside.
Hillside.
That's the hillside.
No, this is the hillside, cause this is the front.
Right.
The front is on hillside.
Hillside, that's what I meant, and so, so, um, okay, so you said it's factory finished.
Yes.
And this is a rendering, it seems to show that it's somehow flat finish. On, on the stand, I'm talking about the standing seam roof here. Um, but what I'm, I'm saying to you is, that is facing east.
Yes.
Hillside, and so, um, that's gonna have a lot of sunlight in the morning. And, um, it'll, if it's, if it's a copper, shiny copper, it's gonna be like a beacon. Uh, reflecting into the, into the neighbors across the street.
So it's a darkish gray, so it's nothing like shiny copper.
Okay, so when, when we get to the point of you making the formal application, I'd like you to bring samples.
Okay, uh, on sheet number six, I believe it is, there are colors, uh, this is a factory color, I can show you, uh. Something from the catalog, I'm not sure if you can get an actual sample of the material.
Okay.
Do, do whatever you can.
This is, that's.
You have a rendering? Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, and so that also goes to, to the west side of the property.
Yes.
It goes to, really, really, because it's, it's on a corner. Um, and. Um, we, you know, in those communities, they don't allow really a lot of, I know that the, the neighbor has pre-existing hedging that's like eight, ten feet tall now. Uh, but in the front of the house, uh, it's, it's a four-foot maximum, we have a zoning overlay district there. So, um, it's gonna be prominent, so I'm very concerned about this, that, that, um. Cause it's at the entrance to, to the beach, and, uh. You know. I'm familiar with the, with, with the effects of, of sunlight can be against the shiny metal, to, to pedestrians too, right? So.
I don't think it would be shiny.
Okay. Yeah, okay, you got the message, okay. Uh, any other thoughts or comments?
There, more rendering is, I mean, there's a whole part of the house that's not shown here, is that correct?
Yeah.
Do you have a rendering of the, of the other part? You have any more renderings at all?
Yeah, everything you have is.
Yeah, let's, I mean, I have a feeling that I'm blindfolded or something, I'm not, I've, I can barely see that.
Right.
And, um, we have one picture, okay, here's a, good, great. But, um, when you make your presentation, maybe you could have things that can be projected on this, oh, there's more. Okay, good, well, this is helpful.
Just one of the.
So this is the north side facing the water. This is the west side, this is the back side essentially, so water's over here, this is the west side, you've got the east side facing hillsides.
Yes.
And this is Gold Rock, okay, Gold Rock, sorry, right, over here.
No, I'm saying, I, I think the, the foundation.
Okay, and what it, what is in front from vegetation perspective?
In front of that?
In the, facing the water, sorry, on the north side of the house.
The left where there's a lot of evergreen planting.
Oh, these are the same.
You said it was on the neighbors part, so, uh, I don't know if it's gonna stay, I assume it will. And it's fairly dense, you should have pictures of that.
We don't, there, there are pictures, if you go to Google, there are pictures there, but are you intending to plant anything on the front of the, um, towards the north? Or are you anticipating that whatever the neighbors greenery is would suffice, or are you planning on planting anything else?
But we'll get the landscape plan.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're going to need a landscaping plan. And the fence, you know, to understand, like, right, there's a fence included on here, I think, and, um.
Uh, there's no fence included.
There's no fence at all.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's.
So do we need one for the pool? We need one for the pool.
Yeah.
Uh, as of now, there's no pool.
Oh.
There's room, there's room left for it, yeah, it is drawn here.
But, um, there, there's none. The application itself.
On these fences, no pool, there's room left for a pool.
Okay, okay.
So.
Okay, so we, so.
Large size pool could be added without going over the block coverage.
Okay.
So you'll be coming back later for the pool?
I assume they're going to put in a pool that's not definite this one.
Okay.
Have you met with, um, with our building inspector?
Um. Tom is no longer the building inspector.
No.
Right.
Um, I don't know if I've ever met him.
Probably not, he's only been here about two or three months. Um. It might be good if you sit down with him and, and, and find out, make sure you have all the requirements to check, I know there's information on the website. Uh. But some things are just subjective, so you might wanna just sit down and talk with him.
Okay.
Okay, um. So, okay.
Yeah.
Any other comments or thoughts?
What's been, sorry, what's the size of the plot itself? Cause you said it's a thirty-three, forty square foot property, what's the size of the lot?
Eighteen thousand, so. Four percent, I believe.
Okay.
Probably about right.
Yeah.
But little less than half an acre.
Okay.
So we're going to. Set the, set for a public.
Here, yes. Yeah.
Public, public here.
Yeah.
Actually, I think it's actually sixteen thousand eight hundred.
And the house is thirty-three.
Wait, four, it's thirty-three, okay.
And the lot is.
It's a very large corner lot.
It's, okay, uh, yeah, I would just want, I would just be interested in, in the area calculation.
And it's been, it has just about every tree on the lot that's been taken down.
There's a nice red maple and there's something fairly central close to the corner, but there's not much vegetation.
There used to be.
And you need, yeah, you'd need a landscape plan that spells everything out and we, we encourage. Uh, you know, native species and pollinators and et cetera, et cetera, and, uh. Preferably not a suburban look, you know. To the, to the landscaping.
This is, uh.
This is overly district. It is, it is overly.
Yeah. Absolutely. So, so, so that's what I'm saying, to talk to, and, and make sure, because. This is not Sag Harbor General, this is very specific to this neighborhood.
Hmm.
Um, I know that the developer was here in front of us. Few months back, about eight or nine months back, uh, for a property, Nenavon, you remember that? Megan remembers that, she didn't like, she, do you remember that one? And Nenavon Lincoln Road?
Oh.
Yeah.
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 Oh, it was very large.
It was large and it was very modern and, and this.
Uh, he built the house for himself in a group, Peter.
Yeah. I didn't realize this, Peter. Okay. So, um. As we, as far as this goes, do you have any questions of us?
When you talk about the landscaping, um, I read something online about identifying every species, common name and botanical name. What's there and what's proposed both.
That's right.
Okay.
And as, as Drew said, that we, we like pollinators.
Hmm.
And we like native plants.
Hmm.
Um. Because this, this once beautiful environment has been decimated by clearing. Um. And so that lot needs to be restored. Because. It could not be, under current code, it couldn't be cleared the way it was cleared. And so, um, you know, we're looking to. To protect the. The environment and the atmosphere of the neighborhood.
Uh, one of the, one of the overly district requirements for the trees is to replace any large scale trees so that over a period of time they grow. So I would encourage you to also think about what that could look like in the, in the landscape plan.
Hmm, okay. I also think I read a requirement for an aerial photo taken within two weeks.
Before, that's, now we're talking about the, the tree removal.
Yeah, just a requirement for the ARV. I believe said, a, an aerial photo taken of the property.
That would be very helpful for us, I don't, I don't remember that.
Normally, we usually have like a survey that has, which is the way the, the landscape will look with everything labeled. Um, just very quickly, I'm just getting back to this house, is it strange that it's like French doors as an entrance?
It's very similar to a house that he built on Cadmus and Meredith.
So the, the fine.
Same French door, it's very similar design as that, and is it.
But it's, it, but it, because it's the.
Are you gonna change your address? Because it's, um, on, it's not on goal, the entrance at least?
I've never even thought of that, I don't know.
Yeah, it's on hillside.
Hillside, right, east, yeah.
The Cadmus house is much on Hudson.
I'm sorry?
The Cadmus house is on Hudson.
Yeah, oh, is it? I thought so, that's fair, it's, it's a resemblance, that's a valid.
Uh, he was originally asking for a house very similar to Cadmus, and I said, well, sort of plan okay, but appearance not, so I think it looks quite different than Cadmus.
Well, that's good.
Mm hmm.
So we'll set.
Yeah, I think the only combination is to step them down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's a similarity.
Set the public hearing.
Yes, I'll take the motion to set the public hearing.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
All right.
All right.
All in favor of that?
All right.
So the public hearing is gonna be May ninth, and once I have all the, um, documents, three, I'll give you a call, you'll come and pick it up and post the property and send the mailing out. Okay, thank you so much.
And we're just, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So who's here for fifty-seven Howard Street? Is anybody here to represent that? There's very patient people in the back.
See now that's happened across the street.
Hmm?
What was that, fifty-nine Howard is across the street from this place.
Hmm.
From this place. From this one. And then Travis.
Now, Packard Lee.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of board and council, my name's Kene Sharn, and I'm the attorney for the applicant. Here tonight with Peter Ferrasato, the architect for the applicant as well. Uh, we're here before you tonight for a modification of a certificate of appropriateness. That you issued for the property on June eighth of twenty twenty-three. Uh, we had appeared before you at that time with a, um, an addition to the closed residence that was, uh. Let's see, the existing residence is one thousand two hundred and sixty-two square feet. And we're proposing two thousand five hundred and. Forty square feet. Um, we came before the board, the board was very happy with the plans, issued a certificate of appropriateness faster than I'd ever seen before. Uh, we've got the staff came to the property and we followed all of its recommendations, so we're, which plans, but. We found out subsequently that the, uh. Building inspector had included fifty percent goal differently than he hadn't passed, and now requiring, but. Um, if you expanded an existing non-structure by more due to people's, you would need additional bearings. So instead of seeking those incremental variances, the applicant decided to not. And is now reporting like a loose plan. So it has turned to many applications that you see that got largely modified by this one that has had some.
Okay.
Oh, like that.
Yeah. So, if we look at this, here's A two hundred, that the above is what was originally.
That's originally what was proposed, right?
Yeah. And this is going to do.
Sorry.
I'll show you.
This is. Like that.
Cause you want a seventy-two hundred, what, what's she?
A two hundred.
Okay.
If you look at the top, you'll see that what was proposed at that time was a glass connector between the historic residence and. An addition to the residence, which would be a two-story addition. Um, there was also a proposed expansion of the existing kitchen and a proposed expansion, um, above the kitchen. It, so that we can have a larger master bedroom. The impetus behind the changes to the house is that a property owner plans to move out their full time within the next year, just family of four. Uh, so they're seeking additional space other than the twelve hundreds square feet they have now, uh, to sort of spread out a little bit inside the house. So what are we proposing now? We're proposing, uh, to still expand the kitchen in the back of the residence. Um, but instead of doing this two-story addition, we're just going to do the one-story addition, uh, for the kitchen. The top of that will be a roof that will have. Uh, vegetation surrounding it, so plantings that will attract butterflies, birds, bees, um, native vegetation. And then some inside there will be solar panels, these will not be visible from anywhere. And should not require variance to the zoning board. Our client is an active philanthropist and, um, dealing with. Environmental issues regarding sustainability, climate change, so this is really important to him, this is probably the most important aspect of the application for him is the. So solar panels that are gonna be added. In addition to that, um, should we go to the next? Okay, oh, yes, we should point out that in addition to the changes that I've mentioned. We did add a window here in order to provide light in. The bathroom.
That we, that we.
Yep. Uh, and also to provide, um, a means of egress, because that bedroom is being modified. And as per code, when the bedroom's modified, if it's substandard, it then needs to meet code.
Hmm.
So unfortunately.
Existing windows are not egress, so we have to have.
So we had no choice with this additional window, but I know that Zach always tells me try not to put in holes in anything, but I couldn't avoid that one. So.
Let me just ask you this, sir.
Sure.
On the original proposal. There was no window there.
Correct.
Correct.
So now you're adding a window.
Yes.
Mm hmm.
Do you have any? I was gonna ask you. Why you didn't center it over the window below?
We'd like to, and that's one point we'd like to make, is that in looking at it together before we came, you know, and practicing. Uh, we looked at the plans and we both noticed that it wasn't centered, so we'd like to make that request.
So continuing on that thought, then you have a, a two oh two. Um.
A two oh two?
A, no, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the window, number two oh two.
Yep.
Um. I thought they were offset for some sort of balance, and now that you've changed, you said you, you'd like to.
You'd like to center it, yeah.
Does, does that make sense? Have you thought about that?
We should center this one too?
Uh, no, no, because this one, um, pertains to a room and it's centered within a room, uh, which is the primary bed, bedroom. The new primary bedroom that's above the, the new kitchen, so, uh, that needs to say centered in the room. To, for, for, for reasons, so, but this one here, we understand that it needs to be centered in the existing window. Um, on the existing house, so which makes more sense. Yeah, and this is.
So let me, let me go back to the extension window, two, number, number two oh two.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's, I didn't hear your full, full rationale, can you go through it again?
So the, oh, I'm sorry, so the, we're making a new master bedroom here, um, in the space. And the window is actually centered on the wall of the master bedroom, so scooting it over would make it not centralized in the room itself.
And I should also say that this addition here was also already approved with that window where it is.
Hmm.
Uh, on the previous.
Yeah, it looks centered before, when it's on its own.
Yeah.
I think what's throwing it off is the leader.
Yeah.
That's it, the leader, uh, when it comes down, that's what's throwing it off.
Yeah, it's a, it's like it's in a different place.
Uh huh. Yeah.
All right, so it, it, it more or less is, it's more or less almost, almost centered in the addition anyway.
That's good.
Yes.
Right, so, so there would be some, some. If you would center it in, on, on the, on the. Okay.
Okay, so. Two oh one, please. This gives you the north elevation two. And now we're on the others. And then here, the changes are, again. Losing that glass connector, losing the two-story addition, doing just the one-story addition with the solar panel roof. And the native vegetation surrounding it, also proposing a shed dormer. In order to gain head height in an existing shower where people currently have to duck in order, and. My client, her age tall, there's, her family, they still are ducking in the background. So the request is to just change the pitch of this roof in order to give them the ability to stand in the shower. Uh, let's see, then, I should point out, but with that change, we have windows two oh six, seven, and eight. So those are new windows. Uh, from the previous proposal.
Hmm.
Okay.
And you're changing the window style significantly, huh?
Yeah. It looks, I like it.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's simpler, it's less, uh.
It's not six over six.
Than the, than the four oh fours, and then, and then even the, uh. Was that sixteen panel doors?
Yeah.
So you've removed the door up here.
There's no, yeah, there's, there's just one.
Oh, this side, yeah, we're not doing the addition.
That's right, that's right, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Exactly right.
Yeah, no, it's a progress, right?
Yes. Uh, then on A two oh two, this, this was, that was off, the rear. As you can see, the big change is that not having the true story addition, which was juxtaposed with the house. Right, means the addition literally invisible from the street, with the exception of possibly seeing the mannequins on the roof. Uh, so that's how we've shown it. Here, so these can see, um. And if you recall, this is a very, very vegetated lot, so we have dark, very tall hedging here. And in the back, um, we have macro as well, it's, you know, English garden, which is being preserved as a result of the way this is being designed. Um, so that's another important thing for clients is to keep that going. Uh, so in terms of. Shielding, screening, we have a lot of it there already, um, I don't even know that we could do much more, um, the. West elevation, which would be the rear of the house, shown on the bottom here, the difference is that, again, we're not, we, we don't have the two-story addition. So we're losing that, and you're seeing sliding glass floors at the back of the building. It's an addition with the. You'll lose the other, then, windows in the master bedroom.
So is there an ability to come out from the master bedroom onto the, the roof of that? Cause you said there's, there's panels, there's solar panels, so there's no expectation of using that outside of the master bedroom.
Yeah, the client is not what he uses for speeding.
Yeah.
Any purpose other than solar panels.
So is that sure the, this is the, you think they're way here, yeah?
Yes, and then we have, we still have chimney, but it's on the side of the.
So. Okay, so I think the question was a good one. Um, I would like to. Okay. My comment is.
Yes.
Question one, where's the Sag Harbor Express when you need it? Talk about modifying and reducing, uh, building size. Um. This would have been a front page, uh, 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 story, I'm sure. Um.
Well, it still can be.
It still can be, so number two is, um, since it's going to be a limited access area, I'd like to put on the plans that that flat roof is gonna be limited access. Because other people are gonna, someone will say, well, there's a problem, and it's not for, not for, uh, right.
No, without the technology that's going up there is Tesla technology, it's very expensive, that you can't, so.
It's very smart of them.
Um, and I'd be happy to come through that or have a, a huge approvals, whatever needs to come from.
So you guys know, this is the, uh, layer of the panels, so the, the, uh, the entire roof is being covered by solar panels, you know, with the mega vacs, it's the gas maintenance accessing it. Uh, probably going for, uh, service.
But they air.
They went air service, it was, we had service in the other panels in case, uh.
Okay, so what I'm looking at is the plants are on top of the parapet wall?
Essentially, yes.
And, and so are they going, how are they gonna be watered, they're just gonna be naturally watered? Or someone's gonna come out and water them, or what's gonna happen?
They're naturally watered, it's gonna be, uh, uh, natural, um,
That's the bulk.
Vegetation, uh, grasses, uh, these, natural.
Because you're saying, you're saying the panels, if I'm reading that right, you're saying the panels are virtually using every square foot of available space on the roof?
Yeah, so we have.
So it's not like a path around or anything?
No, that's correct.
All right, so.
No, that's correct, so we have these planters only at the perimeter to, um, uh, to avoid visibility. There is no visibility whatsoever because the, the, uh, the.
They're sunken.
They're sunken in, so there's a bit of a curve, obviously, the roof is pitched to, uh, stuffer and, and a little.
Straight.
And then, uh, outside, there is a bit, you know, there's another curve, and on top of this curve, you have.
I wanna see other stuff.
So.
So building, whatever, they can put a ladder up in.
Yeah, I was, I was imagining they'd have temporary irrigation till they got established.
Yeah.
The goal is really for them to absorb the rainwater and do their job.
To let, yeah. They're only going to use grasses and plants, so, you know, grasses.
Oh, grasses, okay, so I, you don't expect, you don't anticipate needing permanent irrigation systems up there? Because that's a lot of plants and planters.
Yeah, I don't know, I honestly, that's not what the landscape architect says, um. They've never said to me that I would need, if, uh, commonest irrigation system up there.
We've got here rules to put a irrigation system.
Like a drip system, it's.
A drip system, yeah, that makes sense.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, just in case, obviously, if the plants don't.
We had a sick week, we had a sick week, week drought last summer. So, um, yeah. Um, so, um, you call it a curb, I, I'm thinking of a parapet, can you give me a sensitive height?
It, it's probably gonna be around six inches.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six inch curve, just, yeah.
And, and, and the panels, um, now I'm talking about the solar panels, won't exceed the height or anything like that?
Okay.
Um, so my only problem with this is, um, I've noticed PVC being used in a number of places. And this is in the historic district, so let me amend that to be, um, an accepted material instead of PVC.
Where is PVC figure?
Um, PVC fascia boards, white to match existing, um, it's around the window trims. Um, proposed PVC window and door trim.
PVC primer board.
You were teaching.
What, what aged wood instead of?
Painted wood is fine.
Yeah, wood's good.
Yeah, you know, a hardy board or some other equivalent, um, but yeah, I agree on PVC, thank you for making that eye. Yeah.
PVC tends to be shiny.
You're right, thank you.
Good catch.
You make, they, uh, made so many amazing products now that, that aren't shiny or whatever.
Yeah, like if you don't, like, rely on PVC or else.
Right.
That you don't, that don't, uh, in the rock, like the wood does now, I mean, that, I mean, very.
Okay, so. What are we doing, guys?
This is for which, I'm just, I'm saying something, other planning board, okay. Um, yeah, so please make a motion, somebody.
Um, motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for fifty-seven Howard with the condition that you will replace the PVC material with wood.
Yeah, or hardy.
Or hardy board.
Hardy board.
With an accepted material.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then I'm second.
Okay, while she's running.
Megan and Michelle.
Okay, and while they're doing that, um, I'll take a vote, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
And with that, I'll take a motion to conclude HPARV meeting.
So moved.
Uh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, everybody, thank you, who's ever there?
Thank you.